All right, we're ready to begin.
Well, thank you. It's Thursday, September twenty eighth, and I'd like to call this Lacey City Council work session to order. We do have two of our council members who are with us remotely, Councilmember Greenstein and Councilmember Kunkel. With that, I'd also like to talk about our, address our land acknowledgement. The full land acknowledgement is on our agenda, but we, the city of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people, the Treaty of the Medicine Creek, including the Skala Indian Tribe and the Squawks Indian Tribe. With that, can I get a motion to approve today's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? In all favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Is there anyone opposed? And that motion carries, we have approved agenda. And first up on our approved agenda is our public safety tax proposal. Turn over to Robin and Ty, and thank you for being here. You want to maybe do some quick introductions?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I'm Ty Mensor, one of the commissioners, our sheriff Derek Sanders. We have Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell, who in one week will be interim county manager Robin Campbell. And we appreciate the time. Do we have a set amount of time? So we're here to just talk about the public safety tax that's on the ballot, kind of give you a sense of why we put on the ballot, and then answer any questions you have, try to explain how it's going to work, and then answer any questions you might have. I'll kick off kind of with the resolution, and then I'll pass it to the sheriff. You know, we walked through kind of a, as a set of justifications, the logic behind this, you know, Washington, as I understand it, has a low sheriff or a low deputy per capita type of a ratio to begin with. And Thurston County sits at thirty eight out of the thirty nine counties in that deputies per capita. We included an element of election security, and I will talk about that. And the proposal is for two tenths of a percent of a sales tax. It will be applied across the county. The statute requires or provides that sixty percent of the money is retained by the county, forty percent is split between the cities. I know it's really hard to see that chart, but I'll leave it up there. The breakdown that is sort of a, an estimate is that the tax will generate about fourteen million, two hundred seventy four thousand, eight and a half million will go to the county, five point seven million to the cities. Lacey's proportionate share of that would be point one million dollars. Next, we laid out very specifically for the county's portion, how that money would be spent. These guardrails that I'm going to go through do not apply to the city's proportion, and you'd have more flexibility. We knew that our voters in the rural part of the county, which very strong support for public safety, not always as much support for tax increases, would want to know exactly what, what we're doing with, with the, with the funds. And so it's laid out that the county shares to be used exclusively to support law enforcement services and associated infrastructure. And that's at seventy five percent. And then the other twenty five percent would be for the pro, associated prosecution and public defense and election security infrastructure. And again, I'll touch on that. So the structure was very intentional by the county. We know that, for example, Olympia has already passed a similar type of measure, in fact, two different kinds, I believe. They have different programming needs. Your municipality would have different potential programming needs. The flexibility for you versus kind of what our articulated needs, we thought struck a good balance for the public to feel confident they knew what was going to happen. There's also a non supplant provision in this, which we thought was very important so that voters didn't think that we were going to just shift general fund law enforcement costs to this tax and then actually spend the new money on other things. So, but at the same time, to the extent that the county does need some financial flexibility, I think over time, this tool does have a piece, a strand of financial flexibility for the county. Because as we grow as a county, and we need more law enforcement to keep up and meet that level of service, we'll have a way to fund that without taking the pressure off all the other things that we have to fund through our general fund. So I think over time, it will help the county's financial stability. Meanwhile, meeting our, our level of service needs, and I'll let the sheriff talk about that. I want to touch on the election piece. Election security, as I'm sure you're all aware, is extremely important issue. It's, you know, the auditor would, if she were here, would tell you about threats being made to her staff. The, she's in, she's in routine briefings with the Department of Homeland Security. There's heightened level of, of, of risk and threat all over the nation, and we're no exception to that. And so the board accounting, and, and that kind of coincided with COVID. Those two things together created a need where for more security measures, more, you know, there was social distancing, there was, now there's more need for observation. I mean, the old balloting, processing center that we were using was inadequate. And when you added COVID considerations into these security, we, we really needed to give her a better facility. We invested in that facility by purchasing a complex, we call it the Mottman area over by the family court. And we bought this trio of buildings. And then we hit supply chain and inflation and all these different factors. And so the ability that we have to actually make the needed upgrades became a real problem for us. So we think election security kind of connects closely enough to public safety that we, we debated this long and hard, but we felt confident that we could, the public could feel that there was a direct connection here and a real need. And so we're adding that into that twenty five percent that, that's separate from law enforcement. And that will help us, at least in the short term, get our election security needs met for the whole county. So that's kind of an overview. I'm going to pass it to Sheriff Sanders, and then I might kind of wrap things up. And if we have, if you guys have financial questions, I'm sure Rob can help us out.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good evening. My name is Sheriff Sanders. For those of you that I have not met yet. Yeah, so when I first got elected, I came in and pretty much everyone was telling me the same thing that I already knew, which is that the sheriff's office is significantly underfunded. And this happened not overnight. It's over an extended period of time when the population growth is exceeding the amount of deputies, because as you all know, it's expensive to put police officers on the street. It was exceeding the amounts that the county could afford through the limited revenue sources that the county has. And obviously, in the county and I, I defer to Robin, but most of our sources come from property tax and sales tax. There's not, not a whole lot of sales tax, not incorporated Thurston County. We're relying, I think, pretty heavily on property tax. So that was explained to me, and they said the only other real alternative we have here is to propose a public safety levy or a tax essentially. And so we debated long and hard about how that funding would be split up. The big thing that I'll talk about is first of all, the staffing levels of Thurston County Sheriff's Office. So in this county, three hundred thousand people that we just hit, a hundred and fifty thousand of them are unincorporated citizens. Even as the city of Lacey continues to absolutely boom, that growth is also trickling into the county. The urban growth areas are exploding. I mean, we're seeing the same apartment complexes happen in the urban growth area and an unincorporated county outside of the urban growth area. And we have one, as you can see on the map here, we have five patrol districts. And each of those circles is how many deputies we have working on any given night. And this is the staffing level that we're working with, because we are, we're having, we're not, we only have fifty six total deputies, and I've got thirty six actually actively working. So this is what a night looks like out on, in Thurston County. And as you can see, you know, Commissioner Mahia and I drove down to Rochester for a multi casualty vehicle accident, which also pulled the Northwest car, the Southeast car, and both of the central cars for one collision. That left two cars in the North County with no coverage anywhere else. We would rely on the city of Lacey at that point to assist them. We would rely on the city of Olympia. And so it just gets to a point where, for us, we don't want to be a drain on everyone else's resources. Every time we take what is truly a normal call, car crashes are normal calls and things like that. So the second big issue that I have with this staffing model is that it is pretty much an industry standard now that if, if an officer is responding to what is looking like either an arrest or a violent crime, that two people are going to go to that call. With this, that is not how we are operating. Even as the sheriff, when I go out and I'm an additional body on top of that, I routinely end up at calls that are potentially going to be violent by myself, which is how I know all of my deputies are going to calls by themselves. The issue with that is that it's high liability for taxpayers, it's high, it's high risk for the victim, it's high risk for the suspect, it's high risk for the, for the deputy involved. Even the Supreme Court has ruled over and over again that when deputies and police officers are by themselves, they're allowed to use more force, and that's the opposite of what we want. We want multiple people on scene, being able to de-escalate and work people down, and that's not what the staffing model allows for. The goal with increasing the funding for the sheriff's office would be to fund twenty eight additional patrol deputy positions, three additional sergeants, so that we have supervision over those new deputies, four additional detectives, two more civil deputies, they're responsible for serving all the orders and the evictions in the entire county, as well as two additional support staff and an increased contract service with our scout team, which is similar to, I think, crew for the city of Lacey. Our goal is to get to a point where we have twenty four hour coverage for mental health services in the county. If we were able to get the funding for twenty eight additional deputies, we would be able to increase our staffing at least to ten deputies on duty at one time, which would put two deputies in every single district twenty four hours a day. And that is basically my end goal as, as the sheriff, is to get to a point where at any given point in time, when calls are occurring in those massive districts, that there are two deputies in the area who can back each other up at all times. So that's kind of the, the use of the public safety tax on our end for the sheriff's office. And yeah, again, the staffing levels that he, he talked about are correct. It's, we are thirty eighth out of thirty nine in patrol deputy staffing per capita amongst counties. So we are second to last place. That would be if I had fifty six fully funded or fully active working deputies, got thirty six. So it actually places us squarely in last place. And that is the issue, is that when you're already close to last place, once you start dipping down below that, you become critical very quickly. If we were down twenty positions and we had eighty four deputies or eighty deputies, it would obviously be a less of a
Councilmember Kunkel?
Yeah, we're not seeing any of the statistics that, that you guys are looking at on the screen here. Is there any way we can fix that?
It's just, they brought a board in that shows some of, some of it. We'll, we'll make sure we get that information out to you guys, so you have it for your records.
They're just rolling.
So you're, you're down twenty, twenty positions right now. It are, I know we're always looking for officers too. What, what's the strategy to, I mean, if you even got twenty more, you'd at least be better. So will this allow, would this new funding somehow better position you to fill the positions that you already need, let alone grow these additional positions? I mean, how are you going to find all these extra sheriffs?
Yeah, well, that's actually a really good question, because I just had that conversation with soon to be county manager Robin Campbell today. What the funding would allow us to do is seek out a third party background investigator unit. Right now, we rely on vacancy savings to use part-time background investigators to get us our, our backgrounds done. And we're getting about a background done a month. So that is the issue that we have, and there's no funding to go seek those additional background investigators. So what I would be doing is I would, we're actually currently in a nationwide search for multiple companies to run multiple backgrounds. My goal is to have a new applicant on each of my chief's desk every single day. Using that, that, it's just expensive. Most of the companies are running a model where it's twenty five hundred dollars per applicant, regardless of whether or not they get hired. So that's where the funding issue comes in.
And the other thing is, is I, obviously, you just have issued a declaration of emergency. Does that allow you to do anything different? Or is it just, is this just letting the public know it's, it's an emergency?
It's actually the opposite. It wasn't for the public to know. I just tried to push stuff out because it gets leaked anyways. And, you know, then the narrative turns into something it's not. The declaration of emergency allows me to violate the collective bargaining agreement between the administration and the union, so I can move bodies around where they're needed, instead of having to comply with scheduling and all those other things that are clearly outlined in the bargaining unit. So our CBA allows me to declare a staffing emergency under conditions like this, and then actually just move people where they need to go instead of where they want to go.
Thank you for that clarification. Go ahead. All right, so in two thousand fourteen, I'm two thousand four, Yakima had a similar measure, three tenths of one percent for law enforcement. And it was, it was advertised and sold as a law enforcement tool, and they siphoned it off to the courts and the jails and, you know, and that's all law enforcement. Don't get me wrong, but it was sold as boots on the ground and helping the community and having staffing to where people weren't in danger, if you will. So my concern with this is, is I, I support it a hundred percent. You, you, you know, my twin brother's law enforcement, twenty six, almost twenty seven years, Yakima County. He lived through this. He saw funding to where it was going to help his, their situation in Yakima. And then it went away, and then eventually it went in the general fund. We need to make sure that does not happen. We do not lose the trust of the taxpayers. So what you're asking is, what's the enforcement mechanism on? You, you explained that seventy five, twenty five, and it's not going to be siphoned off. What is the enforcement mechanism to make sure that doesn't happen?
If we were to violate the supplant, we, we have as explicit in the resolution, all money shall not be used as a plant funding for any ongoing service program, but Robin can probably answer.
I just think it's important that people know the background where it's happened, other places, and, and that it's not going to happen here. Because that, that's what I'm hearing. It's not. You guys have protective measures, and I want everyone to know they're in place.
Imagine when I tried to explain that to my deputies.
Yeah. So the first thing I would say is it's not going to ever be deposited into the general fund. The board has already established a restricted fund. Where should we be successful, this money will go, so we can clearly track it. And we're talking about establishing actually two restricted funds, one specifically for law enforcement and the other one for the other twenty five percent that is for the prosecution, the public defense, and the election security. So we're going to have restricted funds. Each of those funds has a resolution that establishes exactly how the money can be spent. And then what you have are auditors that will be watching, because the resolution is very clear how we're going to use the money. I would say that there is one other use of the law enforcement piece, because if we are able to hire, we'll also need some infrastructure. So you may see money going to a building that will house these additional staff. But other than that, it's specifically intended for boots on the ground, what the sheriff needs.
One other follow up was, we're eerily similar to Yakima, especially in their situation in two thousand and four. And they asked for three tenths. We're only asking for two tenths. Is that adequate? Because we don't want to put a Band-Aid fix on something. We want to have a solution and, you know, and have the resources to fix that to where not just our officers, but our residents and our businesses or, you know.
Yeah, how'd you, how'd you come up with the two, two tenths or three tenths? Well, I definitely didn't want to go with one tenth for the same reason. And, and then it was looking, you know, we didn't want to over ask, obviously, from the, from the public. So we looked at the numbers generated by the two tenths, and we felt comfortable that it could get, it could meet the sheriff's goal of those ten. That, that's really my, you know, I mean, you know, anyone that knows my values, I mean, over policing is not a thing that, you know, that I'm trying to accomplish here. But this is, you know, having ten, having two per, per district in the county, I think is just basic, you know. It's just basic fundamental public safety policy. And so that's where I was looking at is getting us, we're not going to be at the top of the list with this level of funding.
Not even
But we should be somewhere toward the middle.
We're getting
That felt a lot better to us than, than where we've been sitting for the last twenty years.
The one thing I'll say real quick too, is that we also didn't want to get in the way of Olympia's existing sales tax. So you cannot go over three tenths per the law. So three tenths is the maximum. And if Olympia is already doing a one tenth, that's two tenths, two tenths marries up with those two. And the second thing is that, while I do feel like there's a, a demand for increase in law enforcement and safety right now, it's also really tough. I mean, passing a tax right now is, is going to be difficult, just in the sense that inflation is so high, people are already struggling to make ends meet. So there has to be some sort of a balance there, I think.
Councilmember Greenstein?
Yeah, so fully in support of this. My question is really about the piece of this that goes to the city. And I'm not sure who could best answer it, but Commissioner Mensah said that that money was more flexible. How do we assure that that money is also being used for law enforcement?
So the money that goes to the city is not restricted in the same way that the resolution lays out for the county. The money that the city receives is governed by state law for this tax, which basically says that one third must be spent on public safety, and the remainder can be spent for any legitimate government use. So again, there's auditors involved, and you have an excellent budget manager who's going to be watching how you spend the money and advising you on that. But what I found in the law is that public safety is very broadly defined. So it will be up to you to define how you meet that law. But, but it really is about what the city determines is best and meets your needs for the use of these funds.
So when would you, does county start? If it passes in November, then is it three, is it after the first quarter? When would you start collecting the funds?
I think that the first month that we would see the money is June.
June. Okay. So Councilmember Greenstein, we, we will have a little bit of time, you know, if this passes for this council, to pass a resolution to also let the, our, our budget, you know, know how we're going to spend the money. So that's, it can be, it can be a future conversation for this council.
Excellent. Thank you.
Is there any other questions? Well, thank you for coming. We obviously see the need. I mean, you, you have my personal support, and I, I hope we can get the message out there because we have our own needs here in Lacey. We need, we need more officers in Lacey as well. So this, I think, will be very beneficial to the county, will be beneficial to the city of Lacey. And I hope the public can, can see, can see the need, and we'll, we'll support this. Go ahead, Mayor.
So currently, two percent has a number associated with it because of the amount of tax that we collect. But as the county grows, that two percent number is also going to, to grow. Will there be a cap on how much we can collect and use? Let's say, for example, right now, our, our county is three hundred and ten thousand people. But once, you know, in, in the next ten years, development may cause our county to be four hundred and fifty thousand people with another hundred and forty thousand people spending tax dollars in this county, which would increase the revenue of this fund potentially, you know, exponentially. Will there be a cap in place to, to, to say, hey, that's? Am I making sense?
Sunset on this either?
Yeah.
Is there sunset or is there cap? No?
We'll need more officers if that happens.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, it's an exponential rate.
The need for additional county services.
Yeah, but there's, there's not a sunset on this.
No, there's not a sunset on this legislation. There's not a cap.
Okay.
I believe it's the, the only way it can be changed if it's repealed. So a measure could be put forward to repeal the tax at that point.
Okay.
But.
Anything else? Yeah, you haven't made an official ask of this council yet. Is there an official ask? Is there something you'd like this council to do?
I will ask the council to support the measure publicly. One of the things, I mean, obviously, I'm a, I'm a huge portion of the driving factor to try and get this passed. There's no one else in the county who stands more to gain than the sheriff's office. And we have raised quite a bit of money to get this, the campaign going and whatnot. But the one thing I will say that would help, I think, is there's going to be a big question, and we've already seen it, about how the additional forty percent is going to be spent. Our portion of the resolution is clearly laid out. So while I respect the fact that this is a conversation that could wait, it may be beneficial for the cities to at least address how in some way or shape or form they are going to spend the money. Because people across the entire spectrum are going to have questions about how every dollar is spent, not just the counties. So if Thurston County is putting more deputies on the street, and, you know, the city of Rainier is going to paint sidewalks, that's a vast difference, and, and the city of Rainier is going to want to know that difference, I think. So that would be my only suggestion.
That's good. So if, if there's a, if you're asking for us to pass a resolution support, then I, I will, I will make that motion that we do that at an upcoming council meeting. Is there, is there a second? Okay, let's have some discussion. Robin, I see that you.
Yeah. Putting together a question. You mentioned that part of the goal for the use of the funds is expanding so that you have twenty four hour coverage for mental health services. Can you talk a little bit about more how that's achieved? Like, what will this money do that provides more mental health services?
I'm not sure this is the avenue to necessarily have this conversation, because I haven't spoken entirely with Chief Almata. But each of the, I mean, this is an open conversation. It's a really good one to have. Each of the cities has their own mental health team. And I think some of us are even contracting with the same company and calling it something different. This is much akin to the way that Thurston County SWAT team first got started. Each county and each city all had a tactical team. But then what would happen is one team wouldn't be available, and another team's helping. And I know right now, you know, our scout team helps out when the other one's not available and vice versa. I can see that being a potential regional team at some point. Everyone's got the really good idea of having a reg, of having these different mental health responder teams. And sometimes we're even using the same provider. The issue I see is that as a county, I want to have twenty four hour mental health services. Because after ten P M., the district car is now the mental health expert again. And that's, they're not mental health experts. Our deputies never will be. That's not what we train or pay them to do. Where I could potentially see this going with cooperation from all of the different entities is a system where if I have a twenty four hour coverage in the county, the problem is, is I may go a whole night with a social worker sitting inside an office, not doing anything. But if the whole county is putting together and pitching in for maybe one person or two people to be on for the entire county, well, every night when I'm watching the screen, here and there, Lacey will have one, Tom will have one. We're not quite busy enough, I think, to justify the twenty four hour all the time for just one entity. But as a whole, I certainly think we are. So I think that's the future challenge. Again, it takes cooperation and, you know, having that conversation.
Well, and it's a little bit like having firefighters. You don't always have a fire. Maybe we always do have a fire at this point. But you have firefighters so that when you have a fire, you have somebody available right now. So thinking of mental health services like that, where, okay, we don't have a crisis every single minute, but we should have someone available for the moment we need them.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Councilmember Greenstein?
Yeah, I just want to clarify something. So Sheriff Sanders, it sounded to me like what you were really looking for from the city is us sooner rather than later to look at a resolution based on what we're going to do with the money. Right? More so than, I, I know that the mayor brought up a resolution in support, but were you looking more for us to kind of tell the public what we plan on doing with the money? That's what I, the impression I got. So correct me if I'm wrong.
I think that would improve the chances of the ballot measure passing. If the public sees that all of the cities are united to using it for, for the initial cause that's being brought forward, I do think it improves the odds of the, of the, of the tax being passed.
So as, as a part of this discussion for this resolution, do we have, I mean, we obviously have a little bit of time. We needed some discussion here on, on how we can direct this, Troy. I mean, obviously, it's, this is not quite, we need to have probably it works, you know, some time for this council to get together and discuss it. But I would, I have no problem that being part of this resolution that we clearly spell out how we're going to use these funds.
Well, and I think it would have to be two different types of resolutions, because obviously, and, and I think, Mayor, you know where I am on this. Because, and I've actually had this conversation with the sheriff just a couple of days ago. You know how I feel about this council taking a stand on something going before the voters. But I am fully in support of us looking at a resolution on how we're going to spend the money. Because I personally am in full support of this, and will work to help it get passed. But I think you know where I'm going to stand when it comes to the, this council actually passing a resolution in support.
Well, and we're right now in the, in the, in the depths of looking on the budget and the budget proposal for, to present to council. And next Thursday night after the council meeting, we're going to adjourn to a work session for the budget workshop. And we can talk about this type of, of funding. If we can anticipate, if it does pass, how we would use those dollars, and then prepare out of that conversation based on council direction, an action at the October nineteenth council meeting.
That sounds good to me. Is there, is there any other discussion?
Could I ask a clarifying question on your motion? Technically, I think what your motion may have perhaps been was to direct this, direct staff to prepare a resolution for council's consideration.
For the passing of the ballot measure.
A potential resolution and support that would, of course, need to be provided.
And then we can, it sounds like, discuss next Thursday about passing another resolution on how we would spend those dollars. Those are two different motions as, as has been planned out.
Just I I it's not a question, just one tiny little concern. Adding an extra twenty basis points adds us puts us higher than a combined rate higher than slightly higher than Pierce County. And so it it the way my mind thinks is, okay, well, what about major purchases? If I can if I can shave off twenty bips off my major purchase by going to the next county, am I going to do that?
Well, it depends on where you're at in the county. The city of Lakewood is at ten percent right now. This would push us to nine nine, right? So we're getting, we're definitely getting up there. I mean, I it this is it just trust me, there's no one more that will this will cost more personally anywhere here than myself. So I I under I understand that. And it just goes to show you for our kind of our broken tax structure that we have in the state of Washington. I mean, we have property tax, we have sales tax to fund our services. And it's not a great way to fund services, in my opinion. There needs to be another third leg to that stool. But anyway, that's for a different different time. I I see the need. I I think it'd be harder to pass a property tax, even though in many cases, a property tax is is would cost you less, but you know, it what it is the way it is. I mean, it's it's what we're we're left with to to fund the services and we need to fund them.
Certainly, the the sales tax is a very regressive tax, and I'm sure everyone in here recognizes that. And that is certainly, I'm not downplaying that at all. However, sales tax also allows us to collect tax from people who use our services but do not live here. When you use a property tax, the only people carrying the burden are homeowners. When you do a sales tax, we have people coming in for legislative session. We have people coming into downtown Olympia and Lacey for tourism and all those kinds of things, and they use our services. I'm sure Chief can agree. So.
No, I agree. I agree. I do understand that law enforcement is a broad term, broad term a couple of times tonight. But I want a stipulation in there. If you're going to ask for more cops, that there's a stipulation in there that there'd be money for more cops.
Just to clarify.
Sounds like it is.
It's public safety is a broad term. Law enforcement is not.
Yeah.
Yeah. So so, yeah, the public safety umbrella is a broad, broad umbrella. And it's concerning, frankly, from my seat here, because I could speak for a while, too, about our staffing needs, you know, where we are as far as staffing compared to the rest of the state, let alone our comparison cities and across America. We were fifty-first in the nation for staffing in Washington State. And in Washington State, we're behind them by four tenths percent as or four tenths as well. We're at about one officer prepared two thousand. The average is about one point three six officers every thousand. So if we were to staff at the the state average, that'd be another twelve positions we'd be needing.
Yeah, the the concern over that issue, Councilmember Sedman, is really what has hung up the internally in the county, that debate has hung up this measure going forward earlier with the former with with Sheriff Sanders predecessor, we could not come to an agreement on how to structure this in a way that we could all with, you know, arms locked, move forward and present this to the public. Now we have this opportunity to do it, and I'm really I'm really happy that we've we were able to work out language that we feel is tight enough for the voters, especially on the county side. And you guys, you know, as has been discussed, you guys could do the same if you wanted to municipal level, but but I think this is a real opportunity.
And I do recognize it's heavy lift and thank you for that. You're just working hard. Okay, anything else? There has been a motion and a second.
Just to clarify, there there technically doesn't need to be a vote. The the councils can't take action to support any measure without notice, et cetera. So.
Just to direct you, there's a motion saying to direct you. Do you not you need a motion to direct you?
I know there's no motion needed. We can put together a proposed resolution that council can consider at a future meeting.
Okay, awesome. Okay, well, then I'll withdraw my motion. Thank you.
It looks like. Should I take a picture so you can send it to you to send to your council?
Yeah, yes, please.
Yeah.
Thank you all for having us. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Ty, for being here.
Thank you.
This is.
Thank you.
Is this something that each other jurisdictions is hearing from these guys? Are we first, second, third?
Okay, so next up on our approved agendas are capital facilities plan update. Ryan.
Thanks, Ty. All right.
All right.
Again, all right. Well, thanks, Council. Tonight, we have in front of you a briefing on the update to our capital facilities plan. As you're aware, this capital facilities plan was last updated in twenty nineteen and is in due of a real overhaul. We've contracted with Makers. Makers has been here, I believe, one other time to fill the council in on some of the preliminary ideas related to our government facilities master plan that will be a part of our capital facilities plan. So that is looking at, they looked at our our facilities, looked at the needs, and then are projecting out how those facilities will grow over time. Those primary focus areas of the of that government facilities plan, our city hall, our Public Works Maintenance Center, the Martin Way Operations Yard used by Public Works, Animal Services and the Senior Center. And so Makers is here. We've got Julian Beth that will give a presentation on the essentially the final recommendations that will be part of the capital facilities plan and the government master plan. And then importantly as well, kind of ideas and and raising some some issues around how we might be able to fund these future projects and providing some options for how we fund these government facilities. So with that, I'll turn it over to the Makers team to get going on the presentation.
Thank you, Ryan. We are delighted to be here. I believe this is our third time in front of council on this project. If I'm not mistaken, you all are very memorable. And but it has been a minute. So today, we hope to remind you of all of the work that we've done in collaboration with your department directors and city staff to understand what your needs are, what the best, most cost-effective solutions are to solve those needs. And then to have present the new material today, which is around how to phase in these investments and some options for the council to consider around financing and funding. Okay, so here we go. We're going to try to move pretty quickly. Oh. Oh, let me try that. There we go. And we're going to try to move pretty quickly through some of the reminder things, but please raise your hand if you'd like to ask a question at any time. So recall, our project goals are to improve our general understanding of what facilities are needed to support your operations today and into the future. We want to recommend cost-effective investments and build support for those investments through a transparent and collaborative process. And it has been that we have really had a great working relationship with all the departments throughout this effort. And then create a user-friendly CFP that includes a civic facility strategy. As Ryan mentioned, our scope focused on Public Works, Animal Services, this facility, and then the Senior Center and White House. It did include in terms of condition and future thinking, a variety of other government facilities. It also includes in terms of phasing and financing, the new police headquarters and the new museum and civic center, though the planning for those projects was done outside our process, but we were happy to fold it in so you have a comprehensive plan here. And then a reminder that there are a few quote civic or government facilities that are out of our scope. We didn't look at water treatment plants. We didn't look at any of your parks or park shelters, those kind of facilities, as well as utility operations. So those are handled in other department-specific planning efforts. Please keep in mind, this is a citywide plan, not a design. So we intend to set the strategy to address your issues over time, identify your near-term actions and priorities, and then have a phased strategy to implement this over twenty years. And today, we will focus on a quick review of facilities challenges and our recommendations. We will spend a little more time on an updated animal services and interim investments for city hall, as that was new information from for the council since we were here last. We'd love to have a discussion with you about phasing and financial feasibility assessment, and then hope that you will identify any changes needed to prior approval, any changes needed prior to your adoption, we hope at the end of this year. Okay, launching into needs assessment and recommendations. If I don't see any questions so far. Public Works, you might recall, we talked with you about this when we were here last year. This facility is in decent condition, but it is extremely undersized to meet your operation needs today, but especially to meet the needs of Lacey as it continues to grow. It has limited space. It has uncovered high-value fleet, and it is very constrained in terms of circulation as well as has site security issues. There we go. So our recommendation is we took a look at a huge variety of different alternative solutions here. At the end of the day, the one that is really going to meet your needs into the future and do that with reasonably less risk and at reasonable cost is to acquire adjacent property when feasible, if you can, to meet, to improve your circulation and allow you to better meet future needs, and then work to efficiently redevelop the site to support future operations. If you are not successful in acquiring adjacent properties, then we think you need to look relocating Parks Maintenance to Q O Park as you redevelop that site. So if you can't expand on site, you're going to be too tight to operate there in the long term, but you have a little time to make that decision. As you see here, this is one potential layout. So remember, this is a plan, not a design, but it shows how you might with multi-story buildings that have shop and warehouse on the bottom and admin and crew space on the upper floor and a redeveloped site in the corner that gets all of your heated parking, fuel and washing and covered parking and storage on the backside of the site. Note in this drawing how tight the circulation is. We've noted some dimensions there. It is workable, but you have very large vehicles that are back in there and operating. That is a concern, and it is not ideal. So we wanted to show you what happens on that site or what could happen if you are able to, let me try to move this around a little bit. There we go. If you are able to acquire those adjacent parcels, and again, this is just one illustration of how that might work. It shows that you are able to have a much better circulation pattern using this backside for storage and parking and then redeveloping this these front parcels for your crew building and shop. This would allow you to co-locate all your divisions. It meets a hundred percent of your needs, and you could have Parks Maintenance on site, which is more efficient. And it saves you some money by allowing single-story construction and eliminates having to relocate your fuel island. One more point, and then I see questions here. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, so just just a quick question. Is there any headway on our approach to that car wash down the way on on Lacey Boulevard? Have we do we have a meeting of the minds with the owner? Nothing as of yet?
Work into, have you examined that?
Yeah, so, well, I can't answer the update of how that on it's going, but I'm I'm happy to, I will just quickly say that any acquisitions in this area are going to improve your function and situation. There are things that you could relocate today that will help ease the constraint on the site.
I don't see I don't see pints and courts moving anytime soon. And that'll be interesting.
In the showdown to short answer, Councilmember Conklin, no, there's been no change.
Yeah, I think there are issues which with each of these parcels, I think our intention with doing this drawing and exploring this is to say that this kind of approach, especially for council to direct staff to be ready if there are opportunities to acquire these adjacent parcels. Each any one of these four would make significant improvement. Some of them have facilities you could reuse. They would all improve your circulation and ability to meet more of your functions on the site for longer. And at the planning level of cost, the save if you were able to acquire these parcels, the savings between not having to relocate the fuel and using single-story buildings, it's appreciably the same price. So it's essentially a wash if you were able to do it.
Yeah, so one more follow-up. I I know that it's probably going to be more expensive to relocate. But, you know, since the need is great, we we should be thinking about that and looking at other options that we could set up shop in, and that should be part of the plan to to come up with a contingency. If, because I I know it's it's not realistic to expect pints and courts to vacate within the next ten, twenty years. And our approach with the the car wash property, I I it doesn't seem like they're motivated to to work with us. So, you know, there there's things to consider. I I hope that we're looking at other options.
And and are these are you showing up on screen right now are the properties we don't own? Is the is the car wash the one part of the part of the right bomb, right?
Yeah.
So there's a person, you know, to even look at.
That's right.
Have we have we approached? Well, you're right, pints and courts doesn't want to go anywhere, but have we put approached the other two occasions? I mean.
We we haven't officially approached any of these parcels other than, but we're just having conversations and 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 just kind of general conversation about their long-term plans as well, but nothing anything really official.
It seems like it seems like occasions, you know, that that could be operated anywhere. It it doesn't, I I I don't think they're as concerned about visibility physical visibility as as would be pints and courts. And I, you know, we should go and and talk to them to see what what outcome we could create.
Well, one of the items I just want to bring up real quick, I think it's going to be a comment or a question that comes up here eventually, though, is, you know, looking at this site versus another site in this in the city. And one of the things we did to look at, what are parcels of of appropriate size and proximity? And there really isn't a lot within the city limits to be able to accommodate the shop facility needs. And if there were the challenge of making sure that it's centrally located, so it's efficient to go to the south boundaries of the city as well as the north boundaries. So if you look at relocation of the site, you may be looking at multiple locations, which creates a a greater inefficiency.
Well, the the other thing that we need to look at is anywhere close to urban growth boundaries as well. I mean, there's if we're just looking in our city of Lacey lemons, that is very short-sighted. There's a.
Right.
Go, go north, south, east, west, you know, quite. And my problem with this site is, yes, it's centrally located, but it's one of the prime pieces of property on our or economic. Is this is this really the best use for this property and and right off of Midtown on the busiest we have in Lacey, one of the busiest streets on College Street, when this.
Yeah, agreed, totally agreed, Mayor.
I bring that to the city manager sitting next to me, so he's hearing it.
You know, I think those are totally valid questions. I just have a couple of points as we did spend quite a bit of time looking through a whole variety of options, including relocating this entire site to wherever we could find parcels appropriately sized, splitting up into satellites, a whole variety. I will say a couple of things. There really, there really is inefficiencies in operating. The time that your crews are in trucks, not actually doing the job, but just driving to the job is a big driving factor for these facilities.
So what what's the square footage here? I mean, parcels.
So I think, do you know the acreage of? Yeah.
Yeah, there's at least four or five parcels here.
Well, because we just purchased property from St. Martin's University to build in our new police station, and we say, oh, there's no more land. There's land right here.
But land that.
Well, there's also land in the urban growth area along Martin Way. There's a ton of land that we could be looking at that would be more centrally located for northeast and southeast. That we could be looking at that would be more centrally located for northeast and southeast Lacy that we should consider.
I know, I understand it's a big piece of parcel. I know you probably done some looking. I guess the question is, is. Let's continue to keep our eye out and keep our options open as we're going through this.
Yeah, I think that's right. And I think this is meant to demonstrate. That you have a great asset in the city today that you can invest in to support these operations. If you're able to purchase adjacent property, that makes this work even better. If you happen to. Keep your eyes out and you happen to find an appropriately located, sized, located and without wetland. You know, without all the things that you need, then I would say fantastic. Go for it. But.
But we should look in the urban growth area, you know, and to the mayor's point, this is prime real estate in southeast Lacy. And you know, I don't see pints and courts leaving anytime soon. Occasions is a maybe. This, this car wash property, who knows? But we should be looking in the urban growth area because that is more of a central location for north and south. And and we may be able to strike a deal on on property there. It just seems like it's going to be a daunting prospect to try to, you know, work with the other property owners in this particular vicinity.
And just to clarify too, when we said we looked at other properties, first made my comments, it was not just within the city limits. It's in the city area, the environs that we provide service.
That's right.
If I may, keep in mind too, that the permitting process outside this jurisdiction is a lot more challenging in the urban growth. Area. So, you know, look, fire department went for annexation just for that simple fact that they don't have. Ten years for permit process in in with all that goes with it.
I'd like to believe that we would have an influence.
I do have a question. Would this be considered a central public facility?
Yes.
So we could locate it anywhere.
Yeah, or the essential public facility process, this could be a localized, local essential public facility and go through a conditional use permit.
You would have to demonstrate that there was not another viable option, I believe. And so I do think the hurdle, since you have a site that is workable as shown here, might, that might be a challenge. To use that approach.
Is it workable?
Well, it's challenging. It doesn't, it certainly doesn't get you all the way there. I would also say the one other thing to consider. As you're looking for opportunities for properties that are right sized. And I apologize that we don't have the acreage on the top of our hands, I could guess, but we certainly can get back to you. The other thing is if you purchase a new site, you need to think about. How you're going to phase in that construction and what the challenges might be if you've got half of your operation. Working off a site versus, you know, it's sort of for it in, on one hand, it makes phasing. Easier because you can build on a site that you're not operating. On the other hand, if you have to have funding to build the whole project at once to maintain efficient operation. So those are the.
What is the current value of the the property that we do have in this quadrant here that's being displayed?
So we did look at that and I can't remember the numbers. Do you remember Ryan? Yeah, we have a number and we can follow up with that. I will say it is. Relatively small portion of the overall project relative to construction. So the land values.
Let's, 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 let's table that. Let's come back to that. I'd really like to. To have an idea of, you know, if we were to pick up and move, what would be the value of that property? And I think that's something that should be considered when we're looking at expanding.
Yeah, one of the difficult things with the property is that it's not really flexible. It's, you know, set up as city shop space, which, you know, isn't really usable by too many other entities. So really, when we were looking at it, it was really the property that had the value. We can look at that value was.
Ryan, you'd be surprised what commercial operators are willing to do.
That, you know, yeah, it was tore down and you started from a clean slate, but it'd be completely different. It'd be completely different if. We had the whole thing too, where everything but pints and courts, that would be a very valuable piece of property. Anyway, okay, I'll sorry, I'll let you continue.
Thanks. That was a great discussion. What I hear is in the, in your facilities plan, we should make sure that there's flexibility to continue to look. For opportunities in the, in Lacy or in the urban growth area. To potentially relocate, find a site that would work for your operation. So we can easily add that. Otherwise, is there, and we'll follow up with the acreage requirements and the land value because we did work with a broker to get a price. Both for your existing site, for the adjacent parcels, as well as parcels that we were considering the feasibility of acquiring. So we can provide.
We should also consider the potential revenue that that property would generate if it's being operated by a private entity. That would, that would help solidify our decision.
We estimated that the new property would cost nine million dollars and we would get six point two million from the sale of the property.
Yeah, there we go.
Okay.
Okay, anything else for us on this? Okay, let's move to animal services.
All right. So if you recall, animal services is in even more dire straits, I might add. The, the facility is not purpose built, it is aging. It needs significant investment in order to. Maintain operations now in, as opposed to even thinking about the future. It's really undersized. For their current staff and operations, not operating at industry standards of care. And there's also an issue on site, adjacent property, there's some security issues. And so the staffer have a lot of concern about that.
Yeah, the, the overall, the overall operation in the location is appalling. I, I just, I can't believe that we have people willing to work in that space in its current state. And with the, there's something we need to do here.
So if you recall back when we were with you a year ago, our initial recommendation was to just go for a brand new facility. And we took a pause realizing that we should probably explore some other interim options. That would meet the near term needs while a big plan is considered for the full facility build out. So when we did that, we considered modular structures, we relocated the dog operations, which gave them standard. Industry standard care, which is great, but a lot of problems came up specifically. Separating operations all throughout the site was extremely problematic for the staff and safety concerns for them and animals. And one of the biggest issues was that this is just throwing money to a failing facility. And it just seemed to make sense to kind of put a bunch of Band-Aids on. When this is something that just needs to be scrapped and rebuilt.
Totally agree. The other issue is we cannot have livestock in that animal shelter. Due to the location.
Right. At the same time, the, the facilities condition assessment was conducted last year. And they identified just over a million dollars of investments that are needed to maintain current operations. And this would be divided between the next couple of years, so twenty three, twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. So thinking of all this stuff, thinking about the fact that these interim solutions really just don't meet. The full needs of animal services. The staff really decided that they would prefer to move offsite to just buy a new property. And build new, relocate the whole facility. The idea, one thing to note is that action is taken soon on the current site. Then the additional investment would make sense, but it, you know, these things take a little bit of time.
Have a quick question.
Yep.
Ed, why is the city of Lacy doing any of the, isn't this really a county function?
Ancient. Yes.
To the county, look at central within Thurston County.
I mean, for one point. One hundred percent, yes. I do think it's a county issue. And I do think that we should look at a rural area as a potential new site. For a myriad of reasons. One, because it's going to be cheaper for us to do that. If we were to look maybe in South County for a potential location, I think that would make sense. But then there's the question of who is going to be the host jurisdiction for, for, you know, for everything else.
I mean, well, and it's one of those. Pieces and topics of where the future facility to be located is going to also depend on the partners. Because, you know, of course, animal services made up of a partnership between the Olympia, Tom Otter, Lacy and the county. And also what is animal services contract to provide. Right now, it's primarily focusing on urban areas and domestic dogs and cats. It doesn't focus on large livestock. That's not part of. And, and so in order to look at what the future location and the best location for, for this type of facility. And how it's going to provide a service, it's also going to come into where the contractual obligation between the partners and the services provided. So there's a couple of layers of conversation in order to look at where's the best location. And I know those conversations are starting with, between the partners and they're going to be probably occurring future meetings at Jazzcom and I'm a.
Well, I, I think the partners are going to follow along if, if we make some wise decisions with where we move the next. Animal shelter to. Because it's a, it's a necessity. We, our community needs it. But we also need a, an adequate location for all services.
Yep.
So you know, what we need is leadership on this to just go out and make a decision. And I do believe that South County is the best viable option.
Well, Eddie, you're.
Best, best years for taxpayer funds and we'll get the best bang for our buck as far as cost.
And the other piece of that though is, is right now, where the Jazzcom is set up is we provide administrative services to support the staff there. If we do relocate another place and it's not very efficient, then for our maintenance crews and those type of things to maintain the facility. Then we also part of that conversation, we need to see who would be able to take up that administrative oversight and facility maintenance.
I guess where it goes, but yeah, I mean, Ed, you're, you're a representative, let me make it happen.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, I mean, if it were up to me, we, we wouldn't be talking about it. We would be planning another location. So, yeah.
We love the enthusiasm. Let's get this done.
Yeah.
So our final recommendation is to coordinate with those regional partners and purchase a two plus acre site. And construct, of course, that new modern animal shelter. If a property is not able to be purchased, since you guys are going to be looking for a lot of property. The recommendation is to rebuild onsite, work with the staff to make sure you can phase that construction. So in, for the next steps, it's really just making sure to find that property, work with the regional partners to, to make that happen. And we are thinking that it's probably critical to make that decision by twenty twenty four. Because this is actually extremely critical that they get this facility.
I, I think it'd be a huge mistake for us to stay on the same property. I really do. But that's just my, my personal opinion.
Yeah, we just wanted to put a date in here and you all can let us know if you're uncomfortable, but in my, in our experience. Trying to find property as well as you have a lot of people that have to work together to make decisions. It can become an unended, five years will go by before you know it. And so. We were really trying to say, hey, this is, you need to make this happen. We have to go for next year to find a site.
Who's the chair of Jazz? Lisa Partially.
Yes, Lisa Partially is the current chair, correct.
Makes sense that Lisa would be the chair. I mean, I, you're right, this will take some leadership and I, I would like to. I like to, you know, shift this to Jazzcom and say, hey, we're giving you to twenty twenty four to figure this out. You know, Lacy, if you can figure out, Lacy's going to need to take a step back because this shouldn't be just on the city of Lacy to figure out these needs here.
Correct, correct. Could not agree more.
Right. So looking at City Hall now. This facility, as you know, was built in stages, so that we have three different wings. There is aging facilities, specifically in the central and east wing. The, there's a lot of inefficient space use because of that extremely long confusing customer service counter, for instance. And, and just really not an efficient space use. So we initially looked at some, some alternative concepts, but given the priority of animal services. And public works and the need that you have there, it just was not cost effective to, to just full on go and renovate the whole place. So one of the biggest parts of that, driving that higher cost was the east wing. So of course, once the police leave, it's a matter of significant cost to actually renovate and bring it up to code. But also to convert it to administrative uses from a police station. So it's a lot of cost to make that happen. In the revised direction that we have with interim options here, we are assuming that the east wing is going to be mothballed. Or not used or potentially demolished so that once the police relocate. And then, of course, this is something that the city would then readdress when it comes to long-term planning, because these are just interim options. So our recommendation is to really focus renovation on the central wing, both floors of the central wing. This recommends revising the customer service area to make it really streamlined and a much smaller, easy to understand. Making the workstation area much more efficient for staff so that everybody's co-located. You have room for all the staff to actually be there. And then, of course, adding more meeting rooms, especially once the emergency operations center relocates to the new police station. Long-term recommendations, of course, would be to rethink leasing the west wing to be able to expand into that space. And then, of course, making sure to understand what the best approaches for the east wing.
So my question is, is, I mean. Mothballing, I mean, obviously we could use it for storage and some other things like that. You know, right now, we've been on the cusp of do we build this training center with a police station or not based on bids? Would, would it be less expensive to somehow clear that out and turn that into a training facility? Have we looked at the cost of doing that?
No, not necessarily. And, and because you're dealing with an existing structure, you're going to have the demo cost and reconfigurations. You're, you're going to have your cost drive up quite a bit. And, and so that's one of the, the challenge we have is with that east wing, just to. It's going to cost money just to mothball, but if you even try to convert it, it's going to be substantial cost. And not knowing exactly how to purpose that and then how to finance that is one of the challenges we have is now we're starting to look forward to. You know, at this planning stage. And as, as mentioned, is with the, you know, remodeling the, the central wing. We get some efficiencies. One of the nice things we found out in a study from their work, from the work from Makers Group is. You know, we're, we have some departments that are very crammed and, and pinched together in terms of staffing, trying to find, as we increase staff numbers, trying to find places to put them. In City Hall. But another place that we have a little bit more space, but we found out it's the efficiency of the space. We have enough square footage to accommodate. Our staffing for the next several years, but we just need to get more efficiency of how the, how do we utilize that space? And also too, for security purposes, looking at our entrances and trying to make sure that we have secure entrances. And consolidated entrances as well.
That's my green style.
Actually, Rick just answered most of the question, but you, you said that the space with some reconfiguration. Would be good for, you know, enough space for some period of time. Do you have any idea how long? I mean. It seems that we have a fair amount of space, including the upstairs that we're renting out, you know. That we could always use if we needed down the road. Do we see that space without the east wing accommodating us for the next ten, fifteen, twenty? I mean, how long do we think?
So the renovations that we're showing just to the central wing, and that's removing the leased space completely. This does take you through about ten years. This is your, this is the interim staff growth suspected. Of course, you know, you can obviously easily use the, the west wing if the leasing option was not there.
So I think the broader, the bigger picture, longer term. The central and west wings, even with recapturing. The leasing space will not meet your thirty plus years of growth. So it is a great long-term, I mean, a great interim solution. It is not a long-term forever solution.
What about remodeling the east side then?
So remodeling the east wing when we looked at it, and this is a unique in my twenty-five year career, helping cities with their facilities. Remodeling the east wing is actually more expensive than demolishing it and rebuilding on the site. In addition, it is.
Bad, bad conditions over there?
It is. It is mu.
We are that far out of compliance and we only have so many pieces of evidence taped to hold it together at this point.
It's so it's a much, um, it's very challenging to make a cost effective use of that facility, which is why we ended up at this mothballing uh, recommendation. So um, seems like a good conversation down the road. Um, it is very valuable property right here adjacent to City Hall. It is reasonable to demolish it. This building was built in a number of phases, so you could um, recapture that space. But bringing that uh, wing up to modern code, including seismic, um, is extremely expensive.
Okay.
HVAC.
Wow.
If maximized for space use, the central and west wings could accommodate um, definitely the 20 year growth. We that's as far as we projected. So yeah, like Julie said, I'm not sure about 30 year growth, but for sure you have the space here.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. Awesome. More comments? Okay.
So looking at parks, culture and recreation, um, as as Ryan mentioned, we focused on the senior center, um, which of course, um, is really active, but a little bit undersized, needing about 30% more space. White House, um, there's limited space for programming because most of the area, most of the house is used for storage for parks. And then, of course, there we have heard that there's a uh, demand for increased indoor recreation space. So our recommendation is to expand the se- the senior center as previously planned. Uh, relocate the White House storage to uh, the Goose Pond property right across the way. Um, and then, of course, renovate um, that uh, that house so that it can have a little bit more expanded um, indoor programming area. And then to meet that, the needs of the um, increased demand for the recreation. Um, our recommendation is to um, continue to explore those community partnerships with folks. And then possibly to um, complete a recreation center feasibility study. Any questions?
For for the for the White House, complete a recreation center feasibility study for the White House.
Separate.
Separate.
It yeah, it's it's for um, uh, indoor is is to assess the community's desires for increased recreation across the community, not just.
It exists.
Develop a funding path forward for that recreation.
Interesting.
Can I chime in just a little bit?
Yep.
Okay, um, right. So that would be something down the road. Um, there's there's a couple of um, indoor opportunities for folks in Lacey that we're obviously working through. And so um, depending on the outcome of those, we'll have to assess what the need is in the future. So this is.
So Jen, when when are you thinking about the next phase of the senior center? When are we actively looking at doing some plans and coming up with a funding strategy for that?
Yeah, so there it um, it is in our Parks Capital Improvement Program, which just came out with the um, comprehensive plan update for Parks Culture Recreation. And it is, I believe there's timeline in another slide, so you'll see that.
I've always been curious, is there any way that um, we could develop that so the senior center actually connects to the community center and then you have significant amount of opportunities for activity to happen there?
There there's operational issues with that because of the access to the both of those buildings. They need a a way to get in there. So you have the the Meals on Wheels program that accesses the kitchen on that side of the senior center. And then you also have the kitchen on that side of the the community center that creates operational issues if you combine those portions of the building. We looked at that very early on when we did the the last expansion of the community or the senior center to see whether or not that was feasible. Came to the determination it's feasible, but it's very expensive because you would have to essentially relocate both kitchens to the other sides of both buildings.
Oh, wow.
And so um, the, as you can see in the concept that's here, that phase two addition, that's the that's the next phase that was already kind of considered.
Correct. So so when we went through that feasibility, so the the orange, orange colors there are what how it exists today, the future expansion, uh, which would be to the east is a is that yellow shade there. We went through that that feasibility. So the the preliminary plans, so to speak, are kind of set for the the future expansion of the senior center.
Well, we know how um, how much that's needed in our community for sure.
Right. So next, we also looked at your facilities maintenance and um, between 2012 and 2021, um, you spent about uh, 600,000 annually on maintenance, just an average. And according to um, the International Facility Management Association, they set operations and maintenance benchmarks. Uh, that is actually 35% below uh, the industry standard benchmark. So our recommendation, as you see the square footage of your buildings continue to grow as you add more facilities uh, according to this uh, facilities master plan. Uh, we recommend that you step up your um, maintenance spending in five year increments, just to be to get you closer to um, that industry standard of maintenance funding. All right. So looking at uh, costs and phasing, this is the recommended plan overall. Uh, you're looking at about 180 million in investments that we are recommending. 29% of those are funded by other sources. Of course, the costs will only be incurred as funding allows, and this, of course, is still flexible if uh, additional grants of funding is acquired. Partnerships, this is all still flexible. The investment addresses decades of disinvestment in some of your facilities. And as we've just previously gone over, uh, it addresses those interim needs for City Hall and long term needs for police, public work and animal services. This will set them up uh, for the future to be make sure that the city can really serve um, it can its constituents well into the future.
Are we still functioning? It's kind of quiet.
I I can no longer hear the meeting.
Yeah, we're having some audio issues. I will go investigate those. Are you here now, council member?
Yeah, I can hear now. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Continuing on to the phasing plan, uh, we made sure to uh, divide, especially for big projects such as public works. Um, divide it so that it's phased construction uh, and that operations can still continue to um, work on site. So as and as you can see in the first phase, we are already taking care of the police station. Um, and we're we're also taking care of the museum and cultural center as well as the animal services shelter. And we begin work on City Hall here as well as the public works site. And that continues into phase two, um, where we finish finish the construction here uh, at City Hall. And then um, the public works continues uh, in phases two and three. Uh, the senior center and White House um, are also are being uh, designed. The senior center construction is happening in phase two. I know that was a question. And the White House kind of um, straddles both uh, the second and third phase with design and construction. And the police training center is is really flexible. It's dependent upon opportunities as we've discussed. So the timeline that we show is pretty arbitrary, depending on when it's uh, when it's funded. How that looks as from the spending perspective, um, you can see that we've noted what is uh, in partnership and what is grant funded. Uh, in the very front end, uh, you know that the police station um, is taking precedence there. And animal services is spread out over um, of four years to be able to make sure that construction. Um, we tried to make sure that we did not overwhelm um, staff and funds with front loading every single thing all of at once, tried to spread out a lot of the projects, keeping the critical stuff in the beginning. Any questions? Yes.
What's the big blue line in 2033? Is that the move of the public works? Is that the public works in the middle of town?
So uh, in in 2033, we're um, really focusing on a majority of the backend site construction. So this is uh, making sure to build the heated parking and the covered storage to really protect the uh, the fleet and equipment that you have.
Some of the demolition of the existing buildings that would need to get moved out of the way to build that stuff as well.
Correct.
Right. Last section here, funding feasibility. So um, we in partnership with um, city manager, finance director, took a really hard look at this to say, is this program financially feasible for the city of Lacey? We believe that it is. However, it requires prioritizing government facilities investments. It requires a phased approach and multiple funding sources. We are going to show the highlights of our analysis for illustrative purposes. Obviously, funding is in council's purview, so that's a council decision. Um, but this would just illustrate some bookends of how you might approach funding this type of program for government facilities. Um, we looked at three main sources in our analysis, cash reserves, revenue, bonds and general obligation bonds. So for cash reserves, one key assumption is that um, 17.9 million from your general fund reserves are assumed to fund the police station. So that's a done deal. We believe that there's about 20 million of additional cash reserves that are either unencumbered or flexible. So allocated to projects that are no longer relevant or seem to be um, capable of being repurposed to government facilities. So our two scenarios uh, assume bookends of that approach. Scenario one's very conservative. It says council just allocates 50% of that flexible and unencumbered reserves to government facilities. So 10 million is what you are putting in in terms of cash for these investments. Scenario two is the other end of the book of the uh, bookends here. It assumes that 25% of your total cash reserves or 60 million is applied to these priorities. So revenue bonds, these would be bonds funded by rate increases for you, your utilities in support of the utilities projects within the public works um, improvements. So you have rate studies coming up for sewer, stormwater and water um, that you can update to include increases to fund these projects in 2024, 2026 and 2029. And actually, water is also being updated in 2024. So if council was aggressive, you could include some rate increases already in 2024 for water. Our scenario one, because we're um, contributing only 10 million from cash reserves assumes 100% of utilities, facilities, investments are funded by rate increases. Scenario two, where you're putting a substantial amount of cash reserves and we are able to bring back utilities, facilities, investments by revenue bonds to about 74%. So the general, your general reserves are covering about 25% of those utilities projects in order to keep the rate increases lower and I'll and I'll show you how that comes out. Oops. One light touch there. Um, so final funding source, general obligation bonds. So both scenarios assume whatever remains to be funded, once you've used cash reserves and revenue um, bond sources come from GO bonds. Both assumes that the police bond will require about a 1.4 million annual payment starting in 2026. And both scenarios assume that facilities maintenance is stepped up in uh, what the approach we recommend. So every five years, you allocate another $220,000 to maintenance. This is really important. Stepping up your maintenance is how you stop the pattern of disinvestment in your facilities. It's how you make sure future councils aren't faced with the same decisions that you're faced with today. So here's how they look. If uh, council was to allocate approximately 10 million of cash reserves um, towards these government facilities investments, um, you would need to in uh, accommodate about a three and a half million dollar annual bond payment starting in 2028. So the way to read these charts is the gray is your police bond payment that you've agreed to that begins in 2026. And then the government facilities at this um, spending plan, you'd need to have that general obligation bond um, funds coming in, starting in 2028. So you'd start your payment in 2028. Um, it requires uh, about a nine to 11% utilities rate increase in each of those utilities. So um, running the scenarios, the low was in the nines, the high was in the elevens for your water, storm and wastewater. This, as you.
Sorry, that would be in addition to the already yeah, increases that were anticipated. Okay.
Correct. So that would be in addition to increases anticipated to cover other uh, utilities cost increases. Thank you. That's a great point. Um, this scenario, as you can see, would cost uh, over 50 million in interest and require a total payment of 104 million for their general obligation bond over 30 years. Allocating the other bookend, so allocating 60 million reserves really changes the picture. So the more you put cash down, the less it it pushes, first of all, it pushes your debt way out into the future. And it drastically reduces the amount of debt you need and therefore reduces your interest in your overall payment. So this scenario uses 60 million in reserves to reduce the rate increases, reduce your annual payment and reduce your interest. You have about a 1.7 million dollar bond payment, but it doesn't hit until 2034. So it's quite a ways out and you can think about where your community will have grown and where your general fund will be in that time in the future. It does require a 5% utilities rate increase in addition to increases already planned. So that brings that increase down to support um, uh, these projects. And it uh, reduces your total interest. So now you're paying about 24.3 million in interest and reduces the overall payment to about half. So you're at 50 million rather than over 100 million. Any questions about these scenarios? Big numbers here for sure. Facilities investments are very expensive and what we intended to do today was hopefully um, give the council some um, interesting information to support what we hope is a robust discussion later in the year around priorities for those reserve funds. So it's not to be discussed today, but just so you um, can see that if these investments are important, um, that you know, you could consider allocating reserve funds to these facilities.
I have a question that maybe is for Troy. Option two, if we took more in the reserve funds, is that going to still leave us in a healthy place for reserves if we did that?
Well, life is about choices, right? So we have limited, you know, reserve. The 60 million would be very difficult to find, I think. Um, and we could certainly discuss this in the future, I think, in terms of you know, what that looks like. I think the city manager has plans for an early retreat in 2024. I think you know, this would be a great place to talk about that. But you know, I think we need to keep in mind that of all of our reserves, and we do have very healthy reserves. I think we're very fortunate as a city. I think we're very fortunate as a city. But we're going to be spending about forty-five million just on the police station in cash. So that's coming out of that already. Um we have investments that are going into Great Cooio Park. That's another five point three million. Uh so there's, you know, a a good chunk of money going out in the next two years that make that sixty million dollar number very challenging. But you know, there are, you know, it's at the discretion of the council and and where those reserves go though.
Yeah. So I guess what I'd like to hear in this, maybe for the retreat or later discussion though, is just some guidance on where you wouldn't want to go below in terms of we need this cushion for this and future needs and see what we really have to play with.
Isn't our goal about two months of operating expenses?
Yeah, and and there's some, there's some reserves that are that are uh you know very restricted funds and and but it's not necessarily what you don't want to go below is is what your priorities are. Because some of those reserves are allocated for capital projects, for our utilities or roads. Some are um allocated for parks, as 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 Troy mentioned with the, you know, development of of Cooio Park. Some are uh for other council priorities. So it's really going through and say, how do you want to use these reserves? And um and what about those other priorities that they are assigned to or restricted to? Um because it it does, if you're gonna put more reserves into this capital facilities plan, then it may limit some ability to do other things that the city wants to do to provide quality uh life and services to the community.
What what is our anticipated population growth by twenty thirty?
That's a good question. I'm I'm gonna look, I'm gonna look to to Ryan real quick if you know that off the top of your head.
No, sorry. It's it's not on top of my head.
Well, the base based on on the uh the growth that we're seeing right now and the projects that we're we're seeing come to fruition. If if nothing else were to have changed, wh- what would be our anticipated population growth by twenty thirty?
Purposes of the police station, they anticipated a twenty-year timeline um that included population growth as well as annexations. And for the size of the police station, we estimated that it was going to be ninety thousand people in twenty years.
Ninety thousand people. Okay. We're currently at just shy of sixty.
Yep. And and the other thing too with with our uh shop facilities and and uh animals services, we're also playing catch up to all the growth that we've experienced over the last ten or fifteen years too. And we've expanded quite a bit as a city, and as part of that, we've had to increase uh staff and services. And so the facilities have not uh been kept pace with that growth as well.
Yeah, the last facility um addition was the West Wing of City Hall, which was two thousand eight. So we've grown, we've had fifteen years of community growth without any additional footage to
So so with all that growth, uh we're we're gonna see less property owners and more renters. More more folks that are not uh, yeah, they're they're not contributing to property taxes.
Well, maybe. I mean, uh
True. It's 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 true. It's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you look at just our urban growth area, we have almost thirty thousand urban growth area alone. So it mean that number could be a lot bigger depending on annexations. Yeah, and and I'll remind you that assessed value for a multifamily complex is going to be higher than a single-family residence. Single-family residences typically do not pay for themselves in terms of the the services that the city provides and the the um you know, what they generate in in revenue in terms of property tax.
I have a quick question. All right. Um the these numbers represent um Lacey, all all the things that you spoke about tonight? And 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 they also represent Lacey taking on the animal services portion on its own?
No.
No, and that's a great question. We, for animal services, these numbers represent Lacey paying its share of the animal services investments, which give or take are around twenty-one percent of the total um based on the current uh breakdown of partner contributions.
Okay.
Yep, great question.
Anything else?
Wanted to highlight there are opportunities to reduce costs in terms of total costs. You know, the more reserves you dedicate, the lower the total cost because the less you have to borrow. Um obtaining more grants, more donations, having your staff work on that, that's going to reduce costs. Um pursuing advantageous bond terms as available. So you want to keep your eye out on that. And then exploring other funding options for parks or other functions. So if there's other mechanisms in your city to raise funds for these kinds of facilities, any of those things. These types of projects happen with multiple funding sources over multiple years. Um takes dedication and project champions. Obviously, if you want to reduce your annual payments, um you could do that with reserves, but you could also extend project phasing. That doesn't reduce your overall cost, though. That makes it cost more. However, it can make your um annual payment less. Okay, just two more slides here, you all. This has been a great, robust discussion. Um we want to be clear about what the near-term actions for council and for the city um staff would be. So number one, adopting this plan, and we'd love to know if there's any red flags or reasons that the council members here tonight would um not um be supportive of it. So we can address those before we see you next. Um you'd be working on acquiring property. So that's working with regional partners for animal services property. And that's working on public works as opportunities allow, adjacent or in other places in the city. You'd be starting to work on critical phase one project design. So you'd be hiring an architecture firm or a um, you know, support for animal services in partnership with JASCOM for City Hall interim and for your Public Works crew building, which is step one to um improve that facility. And then for budgeting and funding on the council side, you'd be identifying what amount of reserves you're comfortable with, allocating to facilities, exploring funding options for parks or other functions, if you think you can bring some new revenue sources here, pursuing grant funding for emergency ops center to get that up and running, and updating your utilities rate payer studies to include these uh core facilities for those crews um inside them. Finally, we recommend, don't forget about maintenance. It's really easy to make that um mistake. And those are, once you get, once you invest in these facilities, you want to make sure you're maintaining them at an adequate level to protect that investment. Yeah?
So the two plus acres for the animal services is if we continue regionally, right? Or is that?
Correct.
If we went separately, obviously wouldn't need two plus acres, right?
We did not do separate space needs programs. We did one for your current operation. Yeah.
It it's still realistic to to find a a two-plus acre parcel that we could operate out of. Uh so I don't know if that's really an issue.
I will offer, and I know it's very alluring, and your current your current staff out there would really love to move to a different site. But if you were a full uh full investment and redo of that current site, I would offer that you could certainly improve the security. You could secure that site for your staff if you were, um if that's the solution you end up with. So our next steps, respond to your feedback. As like I said, we'd love to hear if there are any big red flags for you. Um we'll share the plan and the capital facilities plan documents, update the public at a virtual open house. And we were hoping for adoption at the end of twenty twenty-three. That's still the target.
And I'll just mention one other thing, which is uh this plan is required to go through the planning commission process. So the next time the council will see this is after it's gone through the planning commission process. So they're they're required to uh make a recommendation to you. They'll hold a public hearing and those kinds of um requirements. So the next time that the council will see this will be most likely after it's passed through the planning commission.
And when when do you think that will be?
Uh by the end of this year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Awesome. Well, I guess we'll uh hold our thoughts unless there's anything burning until it goes to the planning commission process. My favorite part of that uh presentation was sixty million can be hard to find.
Well, the fact that we have sixty dollars in reserves without spending every penny of our reserves, I think tells you something about where we're sitting financially as a community.
I think, correct. Yeah, I I still like the idea of of looking at the UGA as a uh potential spot for our mu- moving our facilities. So, yeah.
Okay.
A lot of good conversation here.
Yep, thank you. Let's go on to our next agenda. I am watching the local agreement between Thurston County and the cities of Lacey, Olympia, and Tamar. Sport regionally coordinated a Thurston climate mitigation plan. Yep. All right, so we have uh Lindsay Fields here, uh our climate sustainability coordinator to uh give a briefing to you on an interlocal, a draft interlocal agreement on the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative that will uh come to you at a future meeting for this decision. So Lindsay, go ahead.
Good evening, council. Um I'll try and keep this brief while also giving you as much information as you need to make a decision. So the inter- interlocal agreement for the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative, um in early January twenty twenty-three, the CASC now called the EC of the the collaborative got together with staff and with jurisdictions and kind of thought through how this was gonna work in the future and and really work in the future as an implementation tool and how the jurisdictions wanted to go about about that. And so I came on board late May. The it was already kind of made up, but they did a lot of work around restructuring the collaborative so that jurisdictions and particularly staff had a lot more influence and um work to do around getting the plan actually implemented and and actions going. And so there's gonna be some acronyms that I use. Just go through them really quick. The Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, TCMP. That's the guiding plan that all the jurisdictions are signing on to. It lays out seventy-two strategies for um implementation of our climate plan. Um and seventy-two actions. I think there's thirty-some strategies. Um the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative is a new one. It's the TCMC. That's now what we're calling ourselves. So the TCMP was just kind of weird. Are we a plan? We're not really a plan. So we're collaborative now and and we'll go through the collaborative structure here in a little bit. Um the executive commit committee or EC um is just an elected official group um made up of the four jurisdictions. They each have a appointed person and one alternate. And then the Community Advisory Work Group or the CAH. Uh this is a new part of our collaborative, which uh includes fifteen community members from Thurston County, Lacey, Olympia, fifteen total. Um they come together, they provide perspectives and input from the community on how we're implementing these actions and what they would like to see as well. And so jurisdiction parties, so in the ILA, it lays out all of the different parties, all of the different collaborative structures. So the jurisdiction parties are really the driving force behind the collaborative now, where before it was kind of we're not really sure how how this is getting driven in the community. And so jurisdictions um will implement all of the actions included in the TCMP. Um it's led by individual jurisdiction parties. Each party has the authority to act on any actions in the TCMP and decides individually what strategies and actions to implement, including actions in the TCMP or other climate-related actions. Um this will include things um like the regional initiative, and we'll get to that in a little bit as well. Um and how how it's gonna shape the work. So this ILA certainly says that we're gonna work together on some things now. But anything else in the future, we'll have to come back to councils um for for future funding, or we'll have to come back and and have another ILA in place to do those kind of work as well. Um and oh, went backwards. Executive Committee, again, just consists of the uh elected officials from each of the jurisdictions. And it's really more, the EC now is really more of a champion for these strategies and actions um on their individual councils and having conversations with everyone to get these to the actions that the collaborative want to do to really move those um in each of their jurisdictions. The staff team consists of four of us um from Thurston, Lacey, Olympia, and Tamar. Um really making up the bulk of what kind of work is get, what the work is getting done, um designing campaigns, you know, putting uh pure cur- procuring contracts, um really just kind of on-the-ground work that needs to happen um in order for these strategies to get carried out. Community Advisory Work Group is a key new part of this whole structure, which allows the community to come into the collaborative um and really give their perspectives on um how our strategies are working in the community, what they would like to see, and really what the community as a whole wants to push as well. So they have more of a voice in this um collaborative. And then this is a nice, beautiful uh Venn diagram of how it all works together. We have regional climate action. Um and by regional climate action, we mean Thurston County taking taking actions or one action, um and all of us working together to get that action started or implemented. Um and it's really nice too because it's CAH provides perspective, staff team coordinates, jurisdictions implement, and then executive committee champions those as well. Um in the scope of agreement, um there's really five things that this ILA is laying out. The Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan Implementation, um which includes the staff team and EC will work together to coordinate um regional climate mitigation action to the extent that joint action is deemed um possible and beneficial. Obviously, there are some things that are better done at individual jurisdictions. For instance, our new rebate program that we're doing, it may not be great for all of the other jurisdictions to do it, but it works really well for us right now. Um something that's deemed um possible and beneficial, it would be something potentially that is either coming down from the state that all of us will have to implement, or if there's gonna be broad programming that makes sense that we have the same sort of um rules and guidance across the jurisdiction. So stuff like home energy scores and things like that would be something we'd want to work together on. Um and then the second part of that scope of agreement, the Annual Climate Mitigation Retreat. It's an annual retreat where all of us, the EC, the staff team, the CAH comes together, the public can come. Although the public can't give comment, they can certainly come and watch. And we give updates on each individual jurisdiction, what kind of climate actions we've done the last year, what we're planning to do within the next year, talk about our work plans, and then we really have this robust discussion and debate on what should be the focus of the collaborative. So the the goal is to really have one regional collaborative initiative a year that and so this annual retreat is something where we come together. What are we gonna work on for next year? Um Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan Updates. So the next update will be in twenty twenty-eight to the broad plan. But uh we will have a small administrative update in next year, so twenty twenty-four, which will just kind of clean up some of the actions that didn't really make sense now that we're trying to in the implementation phase. Like, maybe we missed something that we need to do first before we implement a certain action. And so we'll we'll be bringing those next year, but then we'll have a broad, big update to the plan in twenty twenty-eight. Um greenhouse gas inventory. Um I will note, this is now a requirement by the state for all jurisdictions, a new bill HB eleven eighty-one. We now have to have a green gas, greenhouse gas emissions inventory in our comprehensive plan and the the climate element itself. Um and so this will allow us to do this together, although we can also do it as a city individually, if we'd like to do that too. Administrative support. Um and so one of the big things that we worked on this year is that there's some planning council made the decision that they are not going to sign on to this next ILA with us. Um and I think that was really just because they do a lot of planning work. They don't do a lot of administrative of contracts and and the the commu- the committee work. Um and so we'll be bringing a third party on um to do that work for us, which will be facilitating the EC, facilitating the CAH, um making a new website for us and and hosting that website, and we'll get into it a little bit too in the next few slides. Funding and in-kind commitment. And so all of the staff is, we're um we're giving in-kind commitment of staff time right now. We're really kind of splitting it evenly. Um but if you'll see the highlighted portion of what um year one and year two will look like for the city of Lacey, um total will be contributing forty-seven thousand five hundred, and that's equally across all four jurisdictions. Well, it it's not based on population size. We're all just contributing equally to this ILA. Um and this is year one and year two because the admin contract that that we'll have will come up again at the end of twenty twenty-four. Um but also like the new website branding, the cost will go down over time because we will just be maintaining the website at that point. And then uh again, in May of twenty twenty-three, Thurston County Regional Planning Council decided that they're not going to come on to the next ILA with us. So there's a lot of discussions around who's gonna hold the contract with a third party. Um originally, we were talking about Thurston County, but their staffing levels may not allow for it. Um and so the city of Lacey decided that we're gonna hold the contract um and that we'll be administering the contract, but we're still getting reimbursed. So we're still just contributing um e- our equal share. Um and so we we are working now with a third party and we'll be bringing that contract with the ILA, hopefully on the nineteenth, to that council um to get approved together. Um and they'll be doing things like coordinating facility, both the EC and the CAH meetings, which includes a fifty-dollar payment for CAH members who elect to have that. As long as a CAH member is not getting paid while they're at meetings, they can get a stipend of fifty dollars, which really helps bring in a diverse group of community members. Um and so they'll be dealing with that as well, producing the annual climate mitigation report. Um so every, our plan says every year we're gonna give a report on how we're doing, so they'll be doing that for us, and then hosting and maintaining the website. Uh yeah, annual retreat, this is kind of redundant, but again, um some of the stuff we some of the stuff we've talked about are a lot around energy, energy, home energy, residential energy, commercial energy is like our biggest greenhouse gas emitter by that and transportation. So these next few years, we expect to hit those two sectors the biggest and probably will have the most support in our annual retreat to get those initiatives going. And then just kind of how that process works, just so you all are aware that it's not like one, one jurisdiction or one person pushing initiative. The staff team prepares options that the CAH have come up with, so the CAH have an option to, to put forth initiatives they'd like to see happen. The EC have the option to put forth initiatives as well. And then the staff team, each individual staff team, team member can put forward initiatives, we collect those, correlate them and go through a process of, is this in our goals for the TCMP? And then we bring them forth during the annual retreat. So then we all discuss those during option two or in step two, step three, we develop the project plan, which is kind of where we're at right now with our first initiative. And then it'll be, so in 2024, I expect to come back with a plan for our regional initiative, a new ILA to execute that initiative. And so then it's up to the jurisdictions to allocate funding, allocate resources. And then the staff team develops the work product as well, which will be something like a campaign, energy efficiency campaign. There'll be a tangible product with that. And staff will, staff will have this item forward October nineteenth, hopefully for council meeting for formal action again with that contract as well with that third party. And I would just like to note that there's a lot of funding for climate right now, commerce, the city of Lacey has, we can get up to seven hundred thousand to put our climate element in a comp plan, which we're kind of already ahead of because we already have a climate element in our comp plan, which means, and I just found out today, we're learning everything. I'm learning everything about the Commerce Commission today that some of that funding can be reserved for future uses as long as it's used by twenty twenty-nine. So we could even use that funding for the future twenty twenty-eight, big update if we need to do that. And then federal funding has a lot of, I mean, the Inflation Reduction Act brought a lot of money for jurisdictions and for just like homeowners themselves to do energy, energy updates. And really, the big part about this is like, Lacey is already moving forward, we've been thinking about sustainability for a long time. We're kind of head of the ballpark. And so this just kind of keeps us on track to do that. Because I don't, I don't, I don't see a future in Washington State where we get less restrictive with climate planning. Really, we're only going to have to keep, you know, adding elements or just ensuring that we're thinking about climate change. And that, with that, I'll ask for questions or comments.
Questions? I'm a little curious, how, how did Lacey get in the position where we're taking this over from a staffing position considering Olympia has so much staff available?
I think there, so the discussion was made that, or there's a discussion around Lacey taking more of a step forward in these groups and then, and and so like really taking on more of a role, like a forward role. And so yeah, we had a lot of discussions and I don't, yeah, politically, I think it was like Olympia and Lacey shouldn't be doing it, it should be Thurston County, it's the broader. But Thurston County was, at the time, it was really like, we really don't have the staffing for it.
One of the things we'll do is, as this, this is a new program. And so one of the things we'll do is monitor our staff time and administration of this contract, make sure that it's not a burden. And if it is in future contracts, we'll make sure that that dollar amount is adjusted to reflect the amount of staff time that we're putting into the, this initiative.
Yeah. And Thurston County is holding the contract with Ickley, who's doing our greenhouse gas emissions as well. And they're contributing in-kind time this next year as well. But yeah, I'll be tracking my time. And in 2024, when we're new to kind of do administrative updates, but also the contract to get renewed, if it's taking up a big chunk of my time, then we'll be able to kind of reevaluate that.
What, why did TRPC drop out?
They, so it's my understanding that TRPC really likes the planning phases of projects and that's really their bread and butter. But what we were asking of them is a lot of administrative work, so just meeting notes, facilitation of meetings, setting agendas. And it just wasn't something that their staff or really their expertise is. And so they kind of, they decided to step out and honestly, in the long run, it worked well because now the jurisdictions have a lot of control over how we implement this. I mean, it worked out really well for, for us.
This is kind of how TRPC is structured, right? They develop a strategic plan at a really high level and then implementation is shifted to the jurisdiction. So we're at that phase now where we have a plan. We have to put it into, like, put it into action. So that, I asked that question when we had the TRPC retreat, how come you guys are bailing on us? And they said, actually, this is, this is the normal cycle, right? We, we put together the strategic framework and then we give it to you all and then you make it happen. And I'm, I'm excited that Lacey is taking a leadership role in this space.
Yeah.
So next calendar year, it was eighty-five thousand, I think?
Eighty-five thousand for, I can go back to.
Two thousand twenty-four, right? And for the next.
Total, yes.
It's total.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so fifteen months altogether for.
But for October, November, December this year, it's eighteen thousand?
Yes, I believe that was.
Just off memory.
From October through December this year, seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. And then for the entirety of next year, thirty thousand dollars.
And a bulk of that this year is getting the website started so that we can have a product come May, so that we our, our, our goal is to have a report done by March, but our website, the earliest we can get it up is May, so it's really starting the website building work.
Do, do you need a recommendation for this going, just information only?
No, this is an informational update and it'll be scheduled for the nineteenth for council consideration.
My understanding is the other three jurisdictions have already signed the ILA.
Well, they've approved it. I don't think it, it'll go around for signature after everyone has approved it.
The rest of the councils and the county commission have already approved the ILA.
Yeah.
Okay. That's my.
I just want to say we should be grateful to TRPC for stepping up and helping us launch this, but also like Lindsay, you had made a comment about how the public could not comment during the CAH meetings. Can you address how the public can?
Oh, yes, yeah. So the, the public comment is during the regional retreat and that's just because we have a lot to get through in four hours and a lot of people to have discussions. But the public can always make comments during our EC meetings, our executive committees meetings, and those typically happen once a quarter or they will with the new ILA. And it's, I think it's like the fourth Monday of the first month. There might be some changes, but yes, you can always comment it for the EC or call me. Let me know how you feel.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Our, our last item on our agenda is the legislative meeting process and efficiencies. Shannon?
Well, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and council members. I'm going to have a presentation here for you shortly. Thank you. All right, so we are here tonight just to review and discuss four options that are outlined in the staff report. City staff does recommend option number one, which would be to move forward with implementing alternative number one, which is no committees, expand work sessions and regular meetings and change city council meeting nights from Thursdays to Tuesdays starting effective January first, twenty twenty-four. To do this, it would require at a future meeting, certainly not tonight, for the city council to pass a resolution to modify the city council policies and procedure manual, to remove references to committee meetings and also an ordinance to modify the city council meetings, that their, their date of the week that they fall on. During this time, if we were to move forward, if the council were to move forward with option one, we'd also recommend that a comprehensive update of the city council policy procedure manual occur in tandem with resolution that would update to remove committee meetings and that we would certainly do a deeper dive on what this comprehensive update would look like at a future council meeting, again, not tonight. This was last reviewed by the city council on August tenth and we also took this item to the Commission on Equity on August twenty-eighth. And their recommendation was to pursue alternatives to the current legislative process to reduce potential barriers to participation. Just briefly, again, we're talking about our legislative structure, which can currently consist of committees, work sessions and regular meetings. Final action in most part is taken by this council at regular meetings. Key findings from a study that we did previously and that was reviewed in depth at that August tenth meeting included that the city council changed form of governments from nineteen seventy-three from mayor council to council manager. Committees existed prior to this change in government. Committee structures changed over time at the city. And we took a look at our peer jurisdictions, which we have nineteen of, and that mayor council manager form of governments were more likely to have committees than council manager form of governments. So just again, as an example, when we're looking at our council manager cities, only two of thirteen have committees, that would be Lacey and Olympia. And the rest of the council manager peer jurisdictions do not. We also found that peer jurisdictions don't use committees uniformly. Some have committees of the whole rather than selective elected officials like we have at our committees currently. I provided this in the staff report, which is a breakdown of all of the information and data that we went over at that August tenth meeting. And some other key findings was that peer jurisdiction committee times often occurred in the late afternoon or evening, whereas the city's committee times occur in a variety of times ranging from morning to mid-afternoon. The findings from the study showed that Lacey City Council staff and community members could save time and other resources with one of the alternatives that was presented, one of the four, to the current legislative meeting structure. It would also potentially reduce barriers to participation for community members, future council members with one of the four alternatives. And it could also reduce barriers to participation if public meetings occurred in mid-afternoon or early evenings. We also went out and interviewed key stakeholders, which included the council and the executive team and the city clerk. And we found that common issues from that key stakeholder group included that processes were redundant. There was not a uniform dissemination of information. Council report outs occurred too late or were significantly abridged and that committee meetings could present a barrier to participation as I just outlined. Common values for committee meetings were that opportunities, they provided opportunities to receive detailed information. They also provided a less formal opportunity to interact with staff members. They allowed for limited insight of other council members. And generally, this is not necessarily a value, but there were worries of the unknown on council members. This was certainly not something that was expressed on city staff side. The executive team took a look at the four alternatives and did a little study and found that their preferred alternative would be alternative number one, which is no committees, expand work sessions and regular meetings. The other thing that we reviewed during the August tenth meeting was potential dates. And again, the idea would recommendation with option one would be to change dates of council meetings from Thursdays to Tuesdays. So when we were presented this to the council last time at the work session on August tenth, we heard, hey, we'd like to see a little bit of more information on what this would look like. So what we did was we pulled data from January twenty twenty-three to July twenty twenty-three and we mocked that up into alternative number one. And this model assumes the following, number one, that the number of regular meetings and work sessions remain the same. Committee items that went to a subsequent work session meeting were not duplicated, that means that they wouldn't show up in two work sessions before going to a regular meeting. But all other committee items, whether they were full council or informational only, were integrated into a regular work session meeting. And that each regular meeting for committee report outs, which wouldn't be necessary, would be reduced by a total of two minutes. So you've got all of this information in the packet, so I'm going to go through it here pretty quickly, but what graph E is showing how many council meetings, including committees, work sessions and regular meetings were held, orange is held, and you can see our council meetings, regular council meetings and work sessions were always had, held, committee meetings less so. There were a lot of committee meetings that were canceled during this period of time. You can also see here with graph H two, we've got our committee meeting items, which ones were informational only and what items were full city council consideration. This was something we went into a great detail in the August tenth presentation. But you can see here that the bright green on the top of the bar graph includes informational only items, meaning that they did not move on to the full city council for consideration. Whereas the blue items on the bottom did move on to full city council for consideration. And this is just showing the, the committee meetings and giving you an example again of when those items, if they were informational only or if they were full city council and when they went to the full city council. So this attachment one shows all of the meetings between January and July. So I'm just giving you an example here, we're not going to go over every single one of them, but you certainly can. But what table F here is showing is looking back at the meetings as they existed, as you all experienced it, what the total time was for each of these meetings. So you can see these committee meetings were canceled. You had the council meeting, it lasted a total of seventy-seven minutes. There was a work session on January twelfth and the total, it lasted a hundred and sixteen minutes. And so we calculated all of this for every single council meeting and committee meeting. We even went back and watched every, well, we didn't watch, I didn't watch the whole thing, so I'm going to clarify. We went back and we found out how long each item in a committee meeting accounted for so that we could accurately model it looking into alternative number one. So this is just again, an example to show what the existing system was kind of continuing into January. But what I wanted to highlight was I've highlighted all of the committee items in bright yellow. So when we integrated them into alternative one, they will certainly show where they ended up. So moving to attachment two, it provides what this would have looked like during the same period of time with alternative one, where there are no committee meetings. There are only expanded work sessions and regular meetings. And what you can see here is the time, that was the current time. So this is what actually had occurred. And this would be alternative one's total time. And so here as an example for our January fifth meeting, you can see that two items that previously had gone to the finance committee were integrated into this particular meeting, making the total time a hundred and twelve minutes for this meeting. So you can go through and take a look at every single meeting that would have occurred during this period of time and see how long it actually was and what would have been the change. So just to point out another example here for this work session, you can see there is no change because no items from a committee meeting were integrated into that particular work session. So here's just another example of that same thing. And I will go back here for just a second, just to point out really quickly that when we said we took off two minutes for each committee report out, that is because committee report outs would no longer occur in alternative one because there would be no committees. So what we did was we calculated all of the minutes and meetings and what we found is it would have reduced the total number of meetings by twenty-two meetings. You can see it would have reduced the total time for committee meetings by seven hundred and seventy-seven minutes. However, it does expand our work sessions and regular meetings, but as a net, you would see a reduction of one hundred and ninety-one minutes. And this is just total, this does not assume, like our last model assumed that, you know, there were six and a half council members and seven staff members at each meeting. This is just when we look at just the numbers for the meetings themselves. So you can see that there would be a significant reduction. And if you do multiply that by ten to fourteen members, you could see that number actually increases pretty significantly. What it also shows you is what would be the average increase for committee meetings, work sessions and regular meetings. So in this particular example with alternative one, since there are no committee meetings, there would be no committee meeting time. You can see the average work sessions though would increase from an hour and forty-eight minutes to two hours and twelve minutes, which if I wrap up this presentation in four minutes, I will be spot on. And then regular meetings, you can see would increase from about an hour and forty-eight minutes also to two hours and six minutes. So this just shows kind of the same information in graph form, you can see that this is what currently goes on and this is what for council meetings and for work sessions. And you can see alternative one is going to be this gold color and then work sessions. Alternative one would be shown here in the graph. So you can see there is an increase, but a net decrease when you take away the average committee minutes. So I also just wanted to point out, we had a council meeting last week that went an hour and fifty-two minutes and it was a very full regular city council meeting. It included a proclamation, a resolution, appointments and then four items on the city manager's report, but no standing general committee. And it only lasted an hour and forty-two minutes, even with some fairly robust conversations that occurred during the city manager's report. Something else I wanted to point out is I know tonight is going a little long, but that we haven't also had a work session since August tenth because our two previous work sessions were filled with other agenda items, whether it was meeting with the Board of County Commissioners or going on a bus tour. So there are a lot of items that needed to come before the council as part of this particular work session. So some other things to consider with alternative one that this council could pursue is to reduce the time that work sessions and regular meetings in alternative one, because they would increase time, would be to potentially hold joint meetings with other government, government bodies and representatives on nights other than council nights. So as an. So as an example, holding a special meeting with the Board of County Commissioners or the North Thurston Public School District on a Wednesday night. Um, having reduced joint, um, uh, meetings with advisory boards. So we currently hold a joint meeting with almost every advisory board at the city. So instead of doing, uh, single ones, having them batched into two work sessions to go over their work plans. Having bus tours and other community meetings held on non-city council nights. So again, having, uh, the bus tour, for example, on a Wednesday or a Monday night. That way, uh, you could continue to use your work sessions as, as work sessions and continue legislative processes. Could also expand the use of consent agendas, uh, to reduce time. So you could place items like advisory board appointments, uh, contract approvals and other minor items on the consent agenda rather than, uh, having them in particular places on the agenda in, under business items. Uh, you could also provide more informational only items via email.
But we'd have the option to be able to pull those off if we thought they're substantial enough to.
Ab- absolutely. At council's discretion, they could always pull something off of the consent agenda and have a conversation about that. Uh, and, um, email some of the informational only items out. So some of the things that maybe don't require a full presentation could be sent out, you know, to the full city council as informational only. Uh, another option could be to condense the regular meeting agenda. And, uh, this would be, we currently, if you look at our regular meeting agenda, have several items that are listed out as their own specific items. However, they could all be considered under business items. So rather than have to go on to a new item or to a new item, you'd just be moving through your agenda. So this would be taking, you know, um, items such as referral from the planning commission and having it just under a general business items with, you know, resolutions, ordinances, et cetera. And that would also clarify some of the timing concerns that come up with, uh, certain ordinances. Um, another option could be to also just reduce the number of joint meetings with various governing bodies. So for example, we currently hold, uh, two joint meetings with North Thurston and the Board of County Commissioners and this could be something that could be, uh, one and then if necessary, an additional meeting throughout the year. So these are just some, um, additional options for the council to consider if, uh, they wanted to move forward with alternative one. Um, we would certainly also recommend if we were to move forward with this of having a control plan. And so I think, uh, these lists, some of the things we'd want to track. Um, and I wanted to highlight items number five and number six because what we'd want to be looking at is, does it actually reduce the overall duration of city council public meetings? So that would be taking, you know, data from twenty twenty two as a comparison. And, um, what is the increased duration of work sessions and regular meetings and special meetings? What does that look like over time and reporting out on that? So with that, I just want to, uh, circle back to the city staff, uh, recommends option one, which would be moving forward with alternative number one, no committees, expand work sessions and regular meetings and change the city council meeting nights from, uh, Thursdays to Tuesdays, starting effective January first, twenty twenty four. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Yeah, I noticed at the beginning you said no action needed tonight, but I'm in support of this recommendation from staff. So thank you for this.
Any other discussion? My, my only question in all of this is, you know, someone who's been the chair of the finance committee for the past decade. Um, there's rarely a time we, we cancel a finance committee. I mean, I could probably count on one hand how many kinds committees we canceled over, over the years because there's a fiduciary responsibility of this council to be, uh, up, you know, to understand our finances. It's something I sit down with auditor every year as we go through our audit process. Um, and so I'm, I'm sort of interested in on how, like, what is, what's going to, an average council meeting in a work session now going to look like under this new system? Especially when it comes to, I mean, Troy, you're going to have to be at, at, at least once a month reporting out very similar to what you, you've done in the, under the finance committee is. So is that going to be like the second meeting? Is that going to be during a council meeting? Like, have you figured out how that's going to work, look?
Um, I have not penciled out the schedule, but I mean, if you think of, if you think of it in terms of the budget, um, we have very prescribed deadlines for all of the actions within the budget and it fits well with the current schedule. So, um, you know, just off the top of my head, I don't have any real concerns in terms of that timing. Um, and, and there's things that the council actually controls. So think about the investment report that we may present to the committee twice a year. Um, that's really the council's policy. So, you know, that's certainly at your discretion in terms of how the frequency that those occur. Um, same with the quarterly reports. I mean, that's.
I wouldn't change any of that though. I mean, that's all really important information that I think is very helpful, um, for this. And I, I think it may be beneficial for the whole council to, to hear that stuff as well. Um, we've just never been in that situation. I just, I'm, I'm just curious, like, is this going to, most of this, is that going to happen under normal council meetings, which I think could be beneficial? Or is it in work sessions and are we going, is it going to be like, you know, you on a, an agenda specifically?
If I, if I, if I could maybe too. And that was one of the things, you know, and why we wanted to really model out what would those seven months have looked like. And so we integrated all of those items again that went to the finance committee that went in front of all the rest of the committees and we wanted to make sure that we included them. And so what you can see, if you look through attachment two, is it doesn't necessarily have a one meeting that is just finance. It is, um, distributed across meetings and sometimes that looks like items going to work sessions. Um, and sometimes that's items going to regular city council meetings for updates. So there are a variety, but certainly I know that the, you know, city manager, uh, would be paying close attention to kind of the distribution of, of those items and making sure that they're getting adequate that time in front of the council.
Right, and I, I would add that.
Wait and see then.
Oh, sorry.
Good, uh, council member, please say.
I was going to say, I, I'm fully in support of this. I think, uh, particularly when it comes to the finance stuff and I've sat on that committee with you for quite a number of years. I think it'll be great for the entire council to hear all of those reports that we hear in great detail at that committee. I also think it'll be great for the public to be, have more access because, you know, we don't get public at committee meetings typically. This will give access to the public to more, far more of what the financial, what's going on in the financials behind the scenes in the city. So I think this is just a win for everyone.
Me too. I just, I'm, I'm just curious of how it's going to work.
Well, I, I agree. I think what I take out from this is it's more efficient time with staff, which is really the biggest concern we should, should have with hours. Are hours different, our staff hours need to be used efficiently in as best as, as we can manage. So I think this does that, accomplishes, it's a lot of work, Joe.
Okay, well, um, looks like this isn't, when will this come before the council for consideration?
We gotta work on the, uh, the scheduling, but we may even start looking at some of the, um, the council policies and procedures levels even as, as early as the October twelfth. No, 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 in November.
Or late October.
Sometime in October.
Yeah.
Maybe.
This is, this is all coming together and.
Okay. Okay, well, I think, uh, you know, where the majority of the council sits on, on this. I, I definitely, uh, they're, you know, in favor of it and, uh, you know, I'm eager to see what it's going to actually look like because we've, I feel like we've already just hit the witching hour. Okay, I mean, you get two, get two hours and then you start losing me, I mean. But so, you know, and you start losing the mayor, it's like, uh, anyway. Um, well, I'm interested in seeing how it, how it goes. So, um, but yeah, I think we definitely mo- move the meeting to Tuesday, that's long overdue. And I'm really curious to see how this news, it's not work out. So, any other discussion? Looks like with that, we reached the end of our agenda. So without objection, I'll call this meeting adjourned and as always, you keep it classy, Lacey.